I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Elkhorn and Common Council to order. It's November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I would like to speak to the flag of the United States of America. And here's the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Harvey.
Here.
Gary Payton Jr.
Here.
Ron Dunwoodie is absent. Scott McClory.
Here.
Ken Minow.
Here.
Dan Roberts.
Here.
Thank you. Our next item is the public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, Chris, let me read my little paragraph here and then if you'll come up to the podium and tell us your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Public comments are limited to three minutes each. The public may speak on any item of city concern, whether or not the topic is included on this agenda. However, the topic does not pertain to an item listed on the council agenda. The council is not permitted to address or discuss the matter during this meeting. Under open meeting laws, the council must notice an item on the agenda to allow discussion on that matter. If the council is not permitted to discuss your concerns, your comments will be considered and may be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Chris Gable. I live at two-two-seven West Rockwell Street here in Elkhorn and moved here back to Elkhorn after twenty-two years active duty Air Force in nineteen ninety-seven. Since that time, there was a scrapyard, excuse me, a recycling plant opened in the old Creamery building when we moved back to town. Periodically, we'd hear the sliding and moving of aluminum cans as they were being, it wasn't a big deal. It was great to have the facility available in the city limits. In the last four years, that facility has expanded itself to where it is now a metal crushing company. If you have not been back there and seen the automobiles, the cement truck drums, and all the other vehicles that are being crushed back there using a backhoe or an excavator to crush the car and loading them into trucks, then you don't live anywhere near that facility. I've been to the planning commission meeting several times asking to stop the noise, and they went ahead and issued a conditional use permit at their last meeting. I submitted seventeen names of people on Rockwell Street that signed a petition to stop that place, and the planning commission completely overlooked it apparently. The person who owns that facility, they also went ahead and they built a wall and not a fence, unpermitted. They put down ten inches or so more of concrete. I don't know if any of this is done through building permits or what needs to be done, but there's an item eleven J on the agenda tonight that I believe the planning commission is error in submitting it to the common council tonight, and I ask the common council deny the conditional use permit because this thing has been operating for years without a conditional use permit. And I complained for eighteen months to the mayor when he was my alderman. Peter's aware of it as my alderman as well. This needs to be stopped. It does not belong in the city limits in the city of Elkhorn. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Would anyone else like to be heard? For public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment. Consent agenda, we have the council meeting minutes of November third, two thousand and twenty-five, and the committee of the whole minutes for November third, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Next, we've got bills payable of two million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve the payment of the bills in that amount?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Gary Payton Jr.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minow.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, we've got report of city officers. For the mayor's report, I'd just like to thank Matt's department. They're doing a heck of a job on leaf collection. I see the truck out there constantly going around the whole city, so I think it's a big improvement over when we had it out, you know, for a private contractor doing it. So that's a plus. That's all I've got. Adam?
Are we gonna read that letter? No, okay. Okay, all right. Mayor, I don't really have anything to add other than to say we're continuing to work with Creekside, or I should say we're continuing to work with Sugar Creek Ridge on that development as well as we have a concept plan presentation, I think, at the next planning commission meeting for a project on West Market Street. And then that'll be coming forward to the council after that. There's also, we have a meeting with somebody looking to build another apartment complex on the west side of the city, maybe a smaller development, but so we have that going on. We haven't heard anything yet on the railroad petition for that crossing yet, so that's kind of what's going on.
All right. Next, which item is that you were talking about?
Oh, yeah, if we, the discussion about the job description for the police chief.
And which, which item is it?
It's actually the last item, last item under new business.
Oh, okay. So under new business, item K, we're gonna move that up next, just because Casey's here, I believe, behind the podium. And there's no sense having her sit here all night if she can't, so. We're on that. Who wants to start then? Is that you, Casey?
Good evening. So we recently updated the police chief's job description with the anticipation of an opening here soon in the near future. So this was recently brought to the Police and Fire Commission. The description has been expanded. It was very generic before the verbiage. It was last updated in two thousand and eleven, so we've updated it. Some notable changes from the PFC meeting included they wanted the supervisory experience increased from three years to five years and added flexibility of the residency requirement to allow for the council to approve that to be extended beyond a year if there are extenuating circumstances for whoever fills that role. So with that being said, I'm happy to help answer any questions if you have them about the description or the upcoming process.
The only question I had with the revisions was the residency requirement. Allow them to be extended beyond one year with extenuating circumstances. A, what kinds of things would count as extenuating circumstances? And B, how long? Do we give them another three months, six months, two years, five years? I mean, so I'd like to know where the cap is.
So it would be up to the council at that point, and I suppose depending on the circumstances. I know with the housing market, it could potentially pose a difficulty to, you know, happen within a year, but I think it's always fair to say perhaps adding another six months and then reevaluating at that point, should there be further issues. But I would, you know, refer to the council to decide if what seems reasonable, I think, at that point.
So if they were not able to move into the city within a year, you'd be letting us know that?
Yes.
Okay.
In advance of the year, yeah.
Right, right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any, any questions or? And then, Casey, what, I guess, what are we looking for tonight? Are we looking to, to approve?
Ideally, yes.
Yeah, all right. Why? I guess I'm always confused when the PFC and the city council are, are working on similar issues or whatever. We have the authority over the job description, but they have authority over their part.
The appointment.
The appointment of it, okay.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Is it?
I'll second.
So we've got a motion and a second.
I'm gonna ask you a question, so.
Is there?
Yeah, I was just curious why it didn't go through the HR committee? Why do we have an HR committee if we're not gonna deal with stuff like this?
It's a fair question.
Well, I think the thought, the thought was that, you know, this was a PFC, you know, PFC provided a lot of input. I know there's a, there was a survey that was sent out to all council members, so I know you guys got to provide feedback from that. And just due to the number of meetings we have, you know, if you wanna, you know, for one job description where, you know, we've gotten feedback on it, you know, that's why we didn't, but I mean, if, if you want all job descriptions to go to an HR committee first, we can certainly do that.
I'm just curious what, you know, what the rationale is for it, that's all.
Are there any other questions? Discussion? That's fine. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Now we'll slide back up to the beginning of the agenda. I think we've got reports of city boards and community partners, fire advisory. Chief Fire Advisory.
Our next meeting is in January. I don't have anything besides what I told you guys last meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Library.
Good evening. Phase two of our construction continues on schedule. The frames of the new study rooms and the telehealth room are complete, and it's, it's really nice to see that taking shape. For the Christmas parade on December sixth, we'll be clearing a parade viewing area in the construction area, so there will still be some, an indoor option for watching the parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Rec Advisory.
Yep, we just have two upcoming meetings. The first meeting is Tuesday, December second, for the Banjell Ad hoc Committee at five o'clock here at City Hall. And the next meeting is on Wednesday, December tenth, for the Park and Rec Advisory Board, also at City Hall at five thirty.
Okay, thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. Just a few updates. Right around the corner, we will be celebrating some holidays, and I have handouts for everyone. I'll leave with Rebecca. We have our tree lighting, which will be coming up December fifth at five PM in Veterans Park. And then our parade on Saturday, December sixth, at one thirty PM. We are doing some co-marketing with the area, because on December fifth and sixth, there's many things to be doing in our community. We have a holiday market trail, One Town, Many Stops, Endless Cheer. We have five different locations for, if you have a significant other, or if you enjoy Christmas shopping, we can have you go to Friends on the Square for different events there, the Christmas barn, the, at Apple Barn, a winery and orchery, Orchard, and Deuster Beck's Brewing Company, and Tara Bard Collections, and the Winter Artisan Market here in the Uncle Hung's Junk Building and at Associated Bank. And there's a map attached with that. I did give out some parade applications for those that, from the city who will be graciously part of our Christmas parade, and we greatly appreciate that. It's just for announcement purposes only, so we get the announcements correct. Also, some exciting news for our community, and we have been, we have had a couple of calls Friday and today. There's a couple Facebook posts out there, Pastries by Chad. Chad Vittiger, the baker from Pastries by Chad, will be joining, oh boy, I forget the correct name, Gordon Ramsey, and he will be cooking in one of the programs. They will be doing a launch party. It's in Lake Geneva at the, I just drew a blank, got the name.
Tap Room.
The Tap Room, thank you, because of the screens that they have available. And I will send out bells when the final details are out. So that's great for our community to get some more exposure on those type of things. And then we, believe it or not, we're worrying about marketing for spring of twenty-six already. So if you have any questions about the holidays or anything, I will leave this information with Rebecca to pass out, but we hope you can join us for the holiday, for the parade, and the tree lighting.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, everyone. This past month has been a little bit of everything. Mainly, I've been working with Chad in administering the library grant and making sure our contracts are up to date and square for reimbursement. Thank you to Cory and to Chris for their help getting those reimbursements lined up. The other thing I've been working on is with the HPC. The Wisconsin Historical Society team is going to be coming to the city of Elkhorn on Tuesday, December ninth, to tour our region, to look at our beautiful historic properties, and then work one-on-one with our HPC to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to support our historic properties in Elkhorn. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Committee reports, we've got a committee of the whole. You were gone.
I was gone. You guys met and talked about the food and truck?
We, we hashed over, if you want a short report, we hashed over the, the food truck ordinance again, and with input from our city attorney and from the chief, we decided to eliminate the background checks in their entirety. And stripped that out of there. Does anyone remember any other big changes we had? And I think you see the.
Was it the amount of days that Rebecca would need?
I think that stayed the same.
Did that stay?
Mm-hmm.
And that she could approve. That was a big one, that Rebecca could approve that as opposed to any company counsel.
Yeah. So.
There you go, there's your report.
Yeah, there's our report. Did everyone get a chance to review the ordinance as written now? And I think the changes were highlighted.
It comes up later.
Okay, so there's our report. Unfinished business, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five fifteen, an ordinance to create a food, mobile food vendor ordinance. This is the second reading, apparently.
I would move to approve the new ordinance as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to new business, we've got a public hearing in regards to the two thousand and twenty-six municipal budget.
All right, good evening, council. Just gonna go over a few highlights for the budget. This is gonna be a shorter version of what you've seen in the past, because I know we've talked about this quite, quite a bit, but I still felt like it was important to just talk about a few highlights, especially for members of the community who may not have observed some of these conversations or heard them, so. Overall budget for across all funds and including both operating and capital expenses is sixty-five billion, eight hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, with revenues of sixty-four million, one sixty-six, eight thirty-six. And the increase from two thousand and twenty-five is largely due to more capital projects for next year, which are eight million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This breaks down the expenditures between the operating budget and the capital budget. You'll see we have an operating budget of forty-five million, five fifty-five, oh eight-two, in terms of, for expenses. The thing I would just highlight is that the, we have a significant amount of depreciation among our enterprise funds for the sewer water and electric, and that, so when you include depreciation, you have a deficit of nine eighteen, nine forty-three. And then if you exclude depreciation, revenues are projected to be, exceed expenses by nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So that's one of those things that we do generally wanna include depreciation, because the intent is you're, you're saving money for future capital projects, but it is a non-cash expense, so, you know, when talking with the auditor, they, they feel like, you know, it's, it's okay not to entirely, solely live or die by your depreciation and, and not try to look at the big picture, so. Just wanna highlight that general fund budget, nine million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We are projected to use some reserves next year of eighty-seven thousand dollars, which we had actually projected to use reserves or budgeted to use reserves in two thousand and twenty-five. We're not gonna end up having to use those reserves, so, you know, this is not atypical, but I just wanted to highlight that. So at this point, we're projecting to be under budget for twenty-five, which would then provide the reserves to cover for next year if in fact we did have to use them. And just as an FYI, you'll see at the bottom the expenses between general government, law enforcement, fire protection, public works, recreation. Those are the different departments within the general government, or I should say within the general fund. The percentage change you see doesn't factor in capital expenses, it's just purely operating, so both the police and fire do have a, you know, healthy amount of capital projects and equipment for next year, so just wanna clarify that. Just for informational purposes here, in terms of the sources of where the general fund revenues come from, you'll see real estate taxes make up the biggest chunk at forty-two percent. There really isn't a lot of change from twenty-five to twenty-six in terms of the sources of funds. Real estate still is forty-two percent, and there's just a real minor change between intergovernmental and charges for services, so that's staying pretty, pretty steady from twenty-five to twenty-six. This is just a breakdown of the expenses by department. You'll see law enforcement is at, at the most with three million, seven, seventy-eight thousand, seven twelve. And just for informational purposes, between twenty-five and twenty-six, there's been a slight change in terms of, last year DPW was sort of second in terms of expenditures in the general fund at twenty-three percent, and now fire, under this budget, is at twenty-four percent. So they've just kind of swapped in terms of their percentage of the overall budget, and that's largely due to increasing some vehicle maintenance charges for the fire department. They have some increased overtime costs. This is just a couple of the highlights of some of the revenue changes. The biggest one is the increase in the contributions from the towns. Part, part of that's due to last, in the twenty-five budget, the towns contributed, their portion that they had to contribute went down by seventy-nine thousand dollars. Twenty-six, it's going up by one ninety-two. One of the biggest reasons is because the allocation percentage is changing. Our share is going from eighty-five point five percent to fifty-two percent, and, I'm sorry, it's going from fifty-eight point five percent to fifty-two percent in twenty-twenty-six. And partly that is due to the change that the fire chief, in terms of getting the more accurate numbers from the county, has changed that percentage. So we're seeing a higher contribution from, from the towns. And then there's a few other, you know, relatively small changes in terms of revenues for the fire, for the general fund. I just wanna note for the decreases, we, we did see a big drop in the general transportation aid of one oh one, seven ninety-nine, and that's just because of the formula that the state uses for the GTA. They take a, they take into account your capital expenditures, and it just so happens that they, they use a three-year rolling average, and so it just so happens that in this past year, our, you know, our capital projects for the public, for street projects was lower than we had in prior years, and so that average went down, but then with next year's planned, West, Centrilia Street Phase Three project, which is, you know, hefty, it's gonna be an expensive project for the city, that's gonna bump that, that average up, so you should see this general transportation, transportation aid number increase next year. So, and then just a few other changes. With, we're seeing a decrease in terms of court penalties and costs, parking fees, and largely, I think that's just due to the police department. You know, they honestly have a lot of vacant positions right now. We're having shifts that are being covered by the sheriff's office, and when the sheriff's office covers those shifts, you know, if they write any tickets, they're the ones that, that collect it under the contract, so that's contributing to it. So. Just in terms of, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of increased expenses, again, fire department salaries, their overtime expenses are going up. And then we're seeing a, we've seen a, across the board increase in expenses for software services, just everything we use. Software becomes more and more, you know, integral to everything we're doing, and, and those costs continue to go up. In terms of decreases, we did see a, we are budgeting a forty-three thousand dollar decrease for contractual services for the PD, and that's just because of, those are the contracted services with the sheriff's office. We are still planning on using the sheriff's office, as you know, even from tonight's agenda, but we've discovered that, you know, we're, we're budgeting for a full, full employment, if you will, full staffing in the police department, so, you know, when you pay the sheriff's office to cover an open shift for the police department, well, you don't really even need to double budget and have both, not only full employment, full wages, but also on top of that be budgeting for covering the contract, so. Hence, we took out that contracted amount just so that we're not, you know, like I said, over, over budgeting for the police department. And then just, I showed this slide last year, but this just kind of shows you how we compare per capita with other communities in terms of our basic operating expenses, so you could see in terms of some of the other surrounding communities, we're around average to a little bit towards the bottom. This is based on twenty-three data, which is the most recent that's available for the, from the Wisconsin Policy Forum. And then just a couple of key initiatives for next year. We're, again, continuing to budget fifty thousand dollars in funding for the building improvement grant program, which is administered by the EDA. We are continuing to donate four thousand dollars to Hazel Ridge Cemetery, because if they, if they go under, which they've been struggling financially, state law mandates that we have to take over responsibility for maintaining that cemetery, which would obviously be a much bigger expense for the city to have to do, so. We've been trying to work with Hazel Ridge as much as possible to keep them going, and we will be doing the updated COT plan for next year. And I wanted to just highlight too that the water fund is going to be installing those water meters next year for approximately eight hundred and sixteen is the, is the goal. So that's the target. And then I did mention that the EMS fund, again, we're budgeting a couple of different areas for more EMS funding, so just wanted to note that. Other key aspects of the budget, there's two percent COLA for non-bargaining employees, except for the electric department, because they're, they don't have the city's step structure. So they would get a four percent pay increase, and then other employees would get the two percent COLA and be eligible for their two percent merit increase. There's not gonna be an increase in employee health contributions towards their premiums, and unfortunately, we're, we're not able to allocate money towards our capital equipment replacement fund next year. But we have been, as councilors are aware, we've, over the last few years, we've had excess revenues. We have transferred those into the capital equipment replacement fund, and we did that earlier this year, so even though we're not budgeting to put tax revenues towards that next year, hopefully, we'll be able to transfer some excess revenues from this year into that fund next year. And as we've talked about, we, unfortunately, because of our, we are gonna have to have some different rate increases next year, one being a three percent rate increase for garbage and recycling fees because of our contract with GFL Environmental. We talked last meeting about the five point eight percent sewer rate increase, which we'll bring back under a resolution at the next meeting. We would ask council, or I guess encourage council, to look at raising water fees next year by three percent, which is what's permitted under the simplified rate process. The last time we raised rates, we were in two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, water rates are just going up everywhere. I'm sure you saw the announcement about McQuanigo's fees going up by forty, forty percent, so unfortunately, water costs are just going up. And I just put a note on here that, again, you know, the fire station looms out there as a, a challenge for the fire department and the city in terms of what's gonna happen, and whether it's rehab, a new facility, or what, what the city decides to do, so that's just a future challenge. We are gonna be under the expenditure restraint limit next year of two point nine percent. We're actually going, we actually have a. Uh, we're actually going, we actually have a negative number next year for our expenditure restraint number, um, once you factor in, um, the, our contracted services number is going up, which gets subtracted out. So, um, we're under the ERP for next year. Um, and moving on to the CIP, um, we have a total project next year of twenty million, two eighty-five, three thirty-seven, fifty-eight. Um, and then over the next, from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-thirty, it'd be fifty-three million, one sixty-eight, one sixty-five. And you can see just a percentage breakdown. Um, public works makes up about thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight percent of the twenty-twenty-six projects and forty-one percent of the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty, uh, projects. Um, you'll see there's a lot of, uh, water sewer projects, uh, not only next year, but in the next, uh, five years. And just looking at the impact on the GEO debt limit, um, again, we continue to monitor this. You'll see that we're continuing to see that rolling average, you know, go down every year. Um, the one thing I just would, would sort of caution or note is that this chart looks at it assuming that you issue debt next year after, after August. Um, if we issue the GEO debt before August, then that would get added to the limit from this year. So, um, so the percentage would be, would be higher than what you're seeing for, for twenty twenty-six, but you could see the trend over the next five years is that the, our, um, rolling average for our debt capacity will continue to, to go down. And just, uh, moving on to the mill rate, uh, our mill rate next year, uh, should go down from about six point six seven per thousand to six point two nine per thousand. And that's just, you know, again, because, uh, you know, unfortunately, assessments and equalized values keep increasing. Uh, we are estimating that the average home value in Elkhorn is up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six eighty-six. So, uh, based upon that mill rate change, we estimate the budget tonight would, it caused about an eighty-dollar, ninety-nine cent, uh, tax increase for city residents based upon that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar value. And this just shows you again, the continued increase in equalized property values for the city. Uh, they increased nine percent for Elkhorn in twenty twenty-five, and they've averaged a ten point nine percent, uh, increase since twenty twenty. So it's just been a really, really high increase. And that is, that is it. I do want to thank, um, Cory for all of her help. Cory, uh, continues just to be a, uh, you know, I, I can't, can't put into words just how, uh, what a critical help she is, and, uh, really does a phenomenal job. So, uh, thank you to Cory. Much of the calculations you see up here are Cory's Excel magic, so. And then I do want to just, uh, well, I guess first start off and ask if there are any questions about what I covered. I know I went through it pretty quickly, but, questions?
See any? No?
Uh, I did want to mention just four-thirty-ish, uh, I got, I got forwarded an email from the town of Lafayette. They sent a letter to our city attorney, objecting to paying for the fire pumper that's budgeted for twenty-six, as well as a, they say a pickup truck, which I'm assuming they must mean the, the command vehicle. Um, they're objecting, saying that that process for their getting their approval wasn't, um, followed properly, and they're objecting to paying for it. So I do want to honestly let the council know about that, and you guys talk about it. Um, if you want to, you know, delay approving the budget till December first to, you know, have more time to talk to, talk, talk to Lafayette. I mean, obviously I'm looking for guidance from you guys, so.
We, we did think we, if we delayed the approval of the budget, is it December first? Is that the date of our next meeting? That'd give us time to shake this out, you know, we've only had the letter about an hour.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
I agree.
So, all right. And I think we're, I think we're in the middle of the public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to comment or have a question or anything, I think it's a, it's a credit to, uh, Adam and the, and the staff for putting this together, and obviously you can see that there's not a big groundswell of the public here, you know, objecting to the budget, so they must be doing a good job. So if we are going to delay approving the budget, is there anything else we need to do? I'll ask once again if anybody from the public would, would like to be heard. Seeing no one, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Adam. Does anyone here, our next item is be a discussion on the, um, CIP. Does anyone have any questions about that?
No.
I think you would just ask them. And then item C is approving the budget and the levy for twenty twenty-six. We're going to postpone, bring that back in December. So moving on to item D, we've got discussion regarding status of mutual aid agreement with the town of Delavan for EMS service and possible decision on whether to pursue renewal of the agreement for twenty twenty-six. Is that, say you, chief?
So I went out and I talked with Superior Ambulance and Medic, Medics Ambulance. Um, Superior does not provide nine-one-one service in Walworth County. Medics was more than willing to help, but medics cannot guarantee an ambulance in the city or anywhere close. Um, currently, they staff an ambulance in Town of Burlington, and they staff in the city of Delavan. The problem is, is that in Delavan, they're not allowed to leave unless they're transporting a patient. So going back and looking at the numbers, um, Town of Delavan, since the beginning of the year, has transported forty people from one of our calls that we've had to call them for. We went into contract services with them as of August first, at six hundred dollars a call, looking at what we're going to recruit, recoup. It was in the memo. Fiscally, it's, it just makes sense to continue the contract with them, it's cheaper than hiring more personnel. At this point, that's for sure. But I just can't find a private, um, that is willing to commit. I mean, it's, it's a dollar incentive for a private company. They're not going to come into town if they're not guaranteed some sort of money.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve. Uh, any further discussion? A roll call, please?
Gary Peason Jr.
Yeah, sorry, mayor. I think, I think, I think, uh, we were just looking for guidance from the council on whether they want us to, uh, request a, a new contract from Delavan.
Oh, the specifics haven't been worked out yet.
Yeah, no, we, we just, this was intended to get guidance from you, because you said you wanted an update before December to be able to then decide what you wanted to do for twenty-six. So if you want us to move forward with getting a new contract that you can then approve for twenty-six, we'll do that and bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we would like.
Okay.
So we will move on. You got your direction? All right. Uh, next we've got discussion and possible decision regarding terminating existing farm lease agreement with, I can't say that.
Fremouth.
Fremouth Farms, uh, for the city-owned property, the farm, and we've got the parcels listed here, and we've got, we will have to get a new lease agreement for those parcels. Who worked on this? Say you, Matt?
Yeah, I put together a memo, and I worked with Capore in putting together a revised exhibit, which shows the areas that are farmed, and then which areas are maintained as a buffer, vegetative buffer, which, uh, is required by, uh, Delavan Lake Improvement Association. Uh, so just looking to basically update, uh, the terms of the agreement with a more current, um, uh, cost value for farmland. That was reflected in this new agreement of a hundred and sixty dollars. So, uh, we've been working with Fremouth for several years, I'd say back maybe around twenty nineteen. So just wanted to see if the council wanted to entertain renewing this contract, or basically coming into terms with a new contract with a revised price, or if you wanted to do something different.
I'd make a motion to approve with the new price, with the new contract.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the new rent per acre price. Is there any further discussion? A roll call.
Gary Peason Jr.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next we've got discussion and possible decision on declaring the department's ice ring component surplus city property and authorizing donation of that equipment to Walworth County.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next we've got discussion and possible decision regarding proposed agreement between the city of Elkhorn and Walworth County for law enforcement services from October first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So this is just more to say, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions, any discussion? Is that a roll call to probably the contracts? Yeah. Roll call, please.
Gary Peason Jr.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
The next item H is basically the same thing, um, an agreement between the city and Walworth County for law enforcement services from January first, twenty twenty-six to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, the second. Any discussion?
I know that, uh, when this came up earlier, a request was made to generate a report on what exactly the, when the, when the county's been here covering, covering our, our calls for service in lieu of the city, they were going to be providing, uh, uh, some kind of a printout of what calls they went on, how many traffic stops they made, et cetera. If that came out, I didn't see, are we still working on gathering that?
Yeah, we, we included that in the PDF, uh, it was the last meeting or the meeting before.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Uh, the chief provided the individual.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
And chief, you haven't had any issues, any problems?
That's tough to answer. Any issues or any problems? Um, there's always going to be issues or concerns when someone else is performing your duties substantial. I would say not substantially.
Okay. All right. Any, any other discussion? A roll call, please?
Gary Peason Jr. Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
And motion passes. Next we've got discussion and possible decision regarding a proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, an ordinance to rezone twenty-two acres of tax parcel, um, KLF one-nine-zero-zero-zero-six. It's located off Cobb Road and Potter Road in the city of Elkhorn, extraterritorial zoning boundaries from A-one agriculture to R-one single-family residence. It's a first and possible second reading. Let's get this one. This went through the, uh, and was approved by the extraterritorial zoning, uh, is it board rather than committee? At their last meeting last Thursday, and they recommended approval to council.
I would recommend to approve.
Second.
So we've got a motion, second. Adam?
I was going to say, our zoning administrator is sitting in the audience. If council has any questions or if Allison wants to give any background information
Thank you. Yes, just very briefly, this is twenty-two acres of land. It's A-one right now. It's all vacant. It's under contract for sale, um, and the property owner will be developing seven new lots on the parcel. Um, so they're, they're rather large lots, um, and he will be coming back in the near future for a final plot.
Okay, thank you. Did we have a motion? Yeah, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Allison, you're, you're up for the next item. Sandy veteran moved there not to go back to your seat.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got discussion and possible decision regarding proposed conditional use permit for Southern Lakes Recycling for a continued metal and cardboard recycling center with outdoor storage located in two-twenty South Broad with three, uh, tax parcel keys. Um, this went through planning commission last Thursday, and I think Allison has a good grip on the subject, so we'll let you start off here, Allison.
Sure, thank you very much. Um, so the applicant, Henry Van Deiken, and Southern Lakes Recycle came in, uh, several months ago to, uh, apply for a conditional use permit application. Um, they have attended several different plan commission meetings, um, I believe three times. Uh, the first two meetings, the item was tabled, um, so that we could have some more discovery in the process. And at our last meeting, the plan commission did make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to the common council with a long list of conditions listed on the conditional use permit, um, such as, um, a one-year lookback period. So the plan commission would be, um, reevaluating the conditional use permit after one year to ensure that the property owners have maintained compliance throughout. Um, several different, um, requirements on hours of operation, um, no car crushing, um, and then a lot of standard, um, I guess, conditions as well pertaining to our, uh, building and zoning ordinances. Um, there is a sound condition on there, um, a drop-off condition, an outdoor equipment operation condition, um, and this is to hopefully help, um, the impact that the business currently has on any adjacent residential properties. This was discussed at length at the plan commission meeting. Um, I was able to do a site visit and, and conduct several different sound measurements from different areas, um, both in the residential neighborhood, nearby the property, as well as on the property and at the pop, property's boundaries. Um, and it was determined that, um, the noise was not a, a heavy negative impact on the residential properties. Um, I could see it becoming a nuisance if it occurs for long periods of time. However, the outdoor equipment is not in operation every day, and it's not in operation all day, and it's not in operation every day of the week. Um, the plan commission also decided to, um, not allow them to operate on Sundays, um, and no outdoor equipment operation on Saturdays. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, I got a question for the chief. How many calls, if any, have you guys had regarding this property?
I don't recollect any off the top of my head. I'd have to look at records though to determine that.
Well, it doesn't happen enough that you would recall it regularly then.
Correct.
My question is about crunching cars. If they're, they're prohibited from now on with crunching cars, what happens when people bring their cars to that lot, and they're not allowed to sell them for sale, which I saw in the conditional use permit? So where do they imagine we disappear to, or how do they disappear, or whatever?
Yes, um, so they are not allowed to sell, one of the conditions listed is they are not allowed to sell to the general public. Um, what happens on this site is when the equipment is brought in, the metal, the scrap, the appliances, the vehicles, um, it's immediately taken off-site to another facility. So typically what they do, per the applicant, how they explained it to me, is when they receive a donated vehicle, they bring it in, they drain everything out of it, um, so they put it up on these stilts, they drain out all the, um, fluids, and then they take their heavy piece of equipment that they have out, outside to pick up different equipment, and they take that piece and they kind of just crunch the hood of the car down to flatten it a bit, and then they pick up that vehicle and they put it on a trailer and haul it off-site. Um, they don't ever sell to the general public. They don't ever sell to the general public. They never have. So, those vehicles are just taken off-site. The plan commission decided that they would allow them to take in vehicles, but they did not want them crunching them flat. So, the applicant stated that would not be a problem. They could still pick up the vehicle, place it in a trailer and move it off-site.
So, they can crunch it, push it down with the machinery, but not make it flat?
They can't crunch it anymore. They just have to pick up the full vehicle. They can't alter the vehicle.
You said they're allowed to push it down, but not make it flat. So, I guess I don't understand the difference.
No, I'm sorry if I misspoke. They're not allowed to alter the vehicle at all. They're not allowed to crunch it or push it down in any way. That was the condition that the plan commission made.
So, the piece of machinery they have literally just picks it up and puts it on a, puts it on a trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, would that mean they, they're going to stack the cars until they have enough to fill a trailer to take them away?
They typically, I, I don't know exactly how many vehicles they get in, but they take in some vehicles and typically one vehicle will go in a trailer at a time. So, if they have a vehicle on-site, from what I understand, they will load up that trailer with different scrap and then they put the vehicle in last. It helps hold down some of the other scrap metal.
Allison, is there anything we currently have in our zoning or any of our ordinances to allow a scrapyard?
No, we currently don't have any definition of a, a scrapyard in our ordinance. Just a recycling center.
And a recycling center. Some of the history in the, from the planning commission was that this, the recycling center's been in it for a long time. It's a debate whether, what he does inside the building with the cardboard and the cans and everything, he's been, been there for years and been fine. But to add, I call it a scrapyard, it's the process that they go through outside to get the material to where it is recyclable. And I think that's a problem being within the city limits. And I really think we ought to look at this a lot closer.
Well, let, let me ask the question inversely then based upon what you said, Ken. If we do have an ordinance for a recycling center, does this fall within that purview?
Well, some think it's recycling and some think it's a scrapyard. I, I don't know definition-wise, Allison, but what's actually going on outside is, is completely different than what originally was there.
So, planning commission interpreted it how?
Recycling. They voted in, in favor of this. Okay, I didn't. Actually, I didn't. But two of us who didn't and the rest of them voted in favor of going ahead with it.
From an enforcement point of view, it meets the requirements of our ordinances? Yes or no?
So, a recycling center in the zoning district that it's located in, which it is zoned M1, is of conditional use. So, we're able to set certain conditions upon the property in order to help enforce anything that we would like.
Have they yet applied for a permit for a fence?
No, not yet. I think they're waiting for this to occur. It's one of the conditions on the conditional use permit that they come in and apply for a permit after this.
When you did noise calculations in the neighborhood on westward, can you tell us? So, I saw, I came in on the planning commission and I thought it peaked at about 50, which was, and you had a slide that, that vanished pretty quick, is, is like a vacuum cleaner or a lawnmower or something to that effect?
Yes. In the residential neighborhood, it was the highest sound measurement rating I was getting was about 50 dBa. And that's about the sound of a, a vacuum cleaner. And it was for just a very split second. It's typically when there's scrap items being picked up and dropped into a trailer. So, per the, the applicant, that occurs about four times a week for 45 minutes only.
And so, the noise complaints that we heard from the residents in that area, do you think the wall that they built up as, as, I mean, I'm not a strong sound engineer, but do you think the, that wall, I don't know when that wall was built. It, it seemed like it, it was noisier in the past and since that wall's been up.
I think it probably helps. Yeah, I think it probably helps because it is a really thick concrete wall and it may help some of the noise impact on the surrounding area.
How tall is the wall?
Oh, I don't know. Maybe 10, 15 feet tall? It's pretty tall. Yeah.
Is it a wall or a fence? What do you mean?
That's a little bit of a gray area. I don't really know. It's more of a wall, but we don't have code requirements on walls. We only have code requirements on fencing. But it does help, I think, with the noise. But it's, you know, it's, it's a really tough one. This is a, a tough application. I think that, you know, we want to take everyone's thoughts into consideration, but they are a really valued business in the city of Elkhorn. So, you know, we also want to continue to allow them to be here in, in some way. I know that in speaking with the fire chief, they, they work really closely with the fire department and they allow, they, they'll take vehicles from their facility. The Southern Lakes Recycling Center will donate them to the fire department for practice and training. And I think they're a good asset to our community. We just want to make sure that what they're doing is not negatively impacting surrounding residents and business owners.
What about outside storage? It seems that, I know you had some slides, that it started out and it grew considerably over the last four years?
Yes, definitely. It definitely grew.
And there's, there's probably a pretty good chance it's going to continue to grow.
The, I mean, it, it very well could. I don't know where it would go. They're kind of using all of the space they have in, in that concrete area where they keep items. Outdoor storage is a conditional use permit in the M1 zoning district.
Matt, can you bring the conditions back up, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think, I guess I've got two points to make. First of all, we've heard, we've heard some citizens complaining. I think it'd be fair to notice that, I think at the first planning commission meeting, almost without exception, the property owners that abut the property, right there, joint lot lines, all of them were in the planning commission meeting speaking in support, whether it was wetages or Broad Street Storage or Castle Maintenance or ADA Cabinetry. They're all the ones right there. Tim Hatch is a private residence right there. They all spoke in favor of this and I'm sure they would have been here tonight if they thought that was necessary. And secondly, the planning commission spent a lot of time on this and I think you'll find that the reason we put the one-year, is moratorium the right word? Or condition, one-year review condition on there, was so that all these conditions would have time to take effect. And we were very clear that if they did not, you know, meet these conditions or if the business increased in size or wasn't going well, that they would have, the, the chance that they would lose their conditional use permit was, was explained directly to them. And they agreed to that. So, I think it's kind of splitting the baby that we're giving them a conditional use permit and the planning commission voted four to two to do that with the conditions, especially that there'll be a one-year review.
I'd make a motion to approve based on those conditions. I'd second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So, can I ask a question?
Certainly, man.
Uh, the, the conditions, I see the conditions that are within the packet, but do these conditions include what was brought up at planning commission? Because I didn't see the one that talked about like renewal after a year. I just wanted to make sure that we're voting on the correct.
Uh, yeah, there, it should be in there.
Thank you.
What was it, Matt?
The last one said one, one-year review.
Okay. Thanks, Allison. Thank you. Sorry about that. It's not.
No problem. Any, any other questions or discussion? Why don't we have a roll call vote on this?
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much.
Very helpful to have you here. And we already did item K, so we will be adjourning to close session. The common council may entertain a motion going to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851E to deliberate offers to sell private property. Three tax keys listed here and we will be reconvening into open session. Do I have a motion going to close session?
So moved.
Second.
Good motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Gary. Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're back in open session.
Okay. Gary? I'd like to make a motion to advise the city administrator to pursue discussions as discussed for tax key items JA 40910001 and JA 40910002.
I can relate. I don't think we need a formal motion. It was just your direction.
That's my direction.
Yep. Okay.
I'm good.
I think, you know, you know, that's your motion that authorized the same administrator to proceed as directed and goes on those two parcels. So, that would be the motion.
That's a motion now.
Rebecca looks like a deer in the headlights over there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.